For disapproval to temporarily waive Pinal County policy and procedure 1.85 to allow food and beverage in the historical 1891 courthouse ceremonial courtroom for the strategic plan workshop scheduled on May 25th and June 4th. Anybody have any questions or concerns about that, waiving of that policy for those two days?
I'm just curious why it ever got put in, in the first place.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Supervisor Sertie, I can probably pass a little bit of light on to that. If I recall, the original concern about that was that the ceremonial courtroom above us can be rented out at times for weddings and receptions and the like. And they were concerned about, you know, having a lot of food and beverages, caterers and that like, coming in for those type of things. So I think it was put in originally for that, to prevent or to kind of curb that a little bit. But now it's not really used for that nearly as much as anticipated. So I think the reasoning behind this now is so that we can have the flexibility should we need to do it.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Kellner, because that's just exactly what I was going to say. When we first took occupancy of this building, we were very proud of it, very concerned about the use of it and trying to preserve the hard work that was done to get it in the state it's in. We may review all of those policies at some point, but I don't think the use really hit the level we thought it might. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number one as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you. Number two on this agenda is a presentation and discussion of human resource compensation and performance management and leadership strategy priorities. And Ms. Shepherd, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Miller, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity to discuss our employees and some of our employment practices with you today. I'm Mary Ellen Shepherd, interim Deputy County Manager and HR Director. And joining me today is Randy Tracy, our HR Division Manager, and Leah Rodriguez, our Senior Compensation Analyst. Our objective today is to provide you with a general overview of Pinal County employees and to share our current experiences in recruiting and retaining a qualified workforce. More importantly, we want to get your thoughts on where we go from here in terms of priorities, policies, and practices. But before I do and get into the meat of the presentation, since you all just came from a ribbon cutting and from food, I am going to present you with a challenge. I just want to make sure you're going to stay focused on this HR data. So, we left in a couple of errors in the presentation. So, the supervisor who finds the errors first is going to win this incredible Pinal County prize, and it is actually a pulse oximeter. So if anyone questions, does our Board have a heart? You can say yes. So actually, I will point out the errors as I go along, but I wanted to call your attention to, there are some unfortunately in this presentation.
I think we're not allowed to accept anything worth more than $10.
So why is this work session important to you today? As will be discussed in more detail in the budget overview that follows, the county's investment in its employees is significant. This next year it could reach over $181 million. But in addition to this considerable financial investment, is the investment that your supervisors, managers, and leaders make every day in supporting a qualified workforce? And also, what's important, is the investment that our employees make in terms of their experience, their time, their skills, and their commitment to serve the residents of Pinal County. So this matters. It matters to our ability, it matters to us, and it matters to our future. Our current strategic priority speaks to employees. It speaks to developing and sustaining workforce culture, creating motivated and successful employees who are proud to serve the citizens of Pinal County. And as you, Board, engage in the strategic planning process, it's critical for us to know, what is your vision? What do you want us to focus on? What direction do you want us to take as we manage this critical resource? So to prepare for that discussion, going to spend a few moments providing an overview of what our workforce looks like today, who our employees are, what they represent. And in the data here, I've included the judicial branch to provide a general overview, but as I get into detail, I will be focusing on county employees, as that's the employee population that we have the greatest influence over in terms of policies, procedures, and rules. And here, if you'll notice on this chart, is where my first error is. There's a typo under the Superior Court position data. The vacant positions should actually be 26. If you look at this data in more detail, you will also see that the total number of employees actually exceeds the positions. And that is because at points in time, we have double-filled positions. And we do this very deliberately to allow for a transition period between exiting employees and newly hired employees. So our employees by profession. This is a listing of the employees in the major categories, and these are our equal employment opportunity categories. Service maintenance, skilled craft workers, administrative support, paraprofessionals, protective service, technicians, professionals, and officials in administration. So you can see by this chart that the majority of our workforce is made up of our protective services workers. This is predominantly those in the sheriff's office, as well as administrative support and professionals. Our employees by tenure. This graph illustrates how long our workforce has been with us. And here's my second error I want to point out, is at the bottom of the slide where it says greater than one year, that should be less than one year. So what this is telling us is our average Pinal County employee's years of service is eight years. I want to call attention, though, to what came out in reviewing this data was the five to 10-year category. We see a dip there between those we have between one and five years at 482 employees, and then it drops down to 332 employees that are here between five and 10 years. And I'll speak to that a little bit more fully here in a moment. Our employees by tenure and average age. This graph also, I want to call attention particularly to the bottom line, and that's employees here less than one year. And I call your attention to this because you'll see the average age of our employees with less than one year is 36 years of age. Our average age of Pinal County employees overall is 43. This isn't surprising in government service. In fact, when you look at the average age in public service, it does trend higher. But I do want to call out the less than one year and that average age of 36. Our employee age by generation. As you can see from this slide, the number of baby boomers we have represents 14% of our current workforce. The number of Gen X, which is 41 to 56 years of age, is 43. So 50%, 7% of our workforce is 41 and above. What I call out in this, as well, is our Gen Z, our 18 to 24-year-old group. That represents only 5% of our workforce. When we looked at retirement and eligibility for retirement, that we do have a large percentage, it's less than 20%, but it's a large percentage of those currently and in the next three years eligible for retirement. So I call that to your attention as a fact that we want to pay attention to. Our employees by ethnicity and gender. So the workforce availability is that is descriptive of Pinal County and the makeup of our county. Then the Pinal County, the lighter color, is our workforce. So as you can see, this chart is quite favorable in terms of our employee population is fairly representative of our community. Not that we don't have opportunities for improvement, but we are on the right track. Workforce by gender, we're slightly overrepresented by males in our workforce when compared to the population here in Pinal County. And please stop me if you have any questions as we go along. Our turnover. Here's where the rubber meets the road. So how are we doing with respect to retention? I call to your attention that this graph is represented in two different ways. We've done this by calendar year and fiscal year. Pinal County traditionally has captured this data by fiscal year, or I'm sorry, by calendar year. But when we looked out to our comparators, many of them captured by fiscal year. So we converted our data according to fiscal year. You will see there are some differences there. And this is largely the way the data is processed. How it has been done historically here in Pinal County, so we've elected not to change it at this point in order to compare apples to apples, so to speak, is the total number of individuals who left our employment is divided into the number of employees at that point in time, so at the year end. And that's what gives us our percentage. When we look at fiscal year, and I'll show you this in a subsequent chart, because the year end is that June 30th timeframe, you'll see that the number of employees leaving during those, that last quarter is significantly higher than any other time of the year. That's why your denominator is actually going to be less, and therefore your percentages are going to be slightly higher on a fiscal year basis versus a calendar year. But what I really want to point out here, too, is the 2016 timeframe. For those of you who were here back then, 2016 is around the time where the county recognized that something needed to be done with respect to high turnover rates and compensation. So the Evergreen Major Compensation Initiative took place in 2016. What happened was people were simply brought to the minimum. In 2017 is where there was a comprehensive placement and range strategy. So you can see that there is a connect, or what appears to be a connect, between compensation, particularly market-based compensation, and our ability to retain a qualified workforce. And I'm going to draw your attention now over to the far right, and that's our current fiscal year. Those figures are in red. They represent through March what our turnover rate has been. So now that we look at this chart, you'll see why we expect that to increase. What this chart reflects is how we are doing compared to our county comparators. And as you are aware, county comparators represent the sixth largest county, the sixth largest incorporated cities and towns here in Pinal County, as well as a northern and southern comparator. So this doesn't reflect all of those comparators, simply because we weren't able to obtain the data. But for those that provided the data, what I hope you are seeing here, and I really hope you're proud of, is how well Pinal County is doing with respect to turnover. We actually do, yes, absolutely.
And just looking at, am I reading it correctly? It looks like Maricopa County and Pima County are tracking almost opposite. I mean, at some point in their fiscal year 1819, they're completely apart. There's apexes on both of them. What's going, am I reading that right?
In terms of how they are compared to each other?
Yeah.
Let me look at that. Well, it's, without delving into it further, I can't explain why, but I can tell you from looking at the way those counties manage compensation, it is very different. Maricopa County has a, what I would call, a aggressive compensation strategy in order to retain their workforce. They bring in people at, other than the minimum of the range, they have actually changed who their comparators are. They no longer use the other counties. Solely, they're using the cities in the metropolitan area. So as you see, Maricopa respond. They're, based on compensation, you're seeing some alignment in their turnover. I also want to call out, though, this is total turnover. So it's influenced by retirements, and that's reflected in our own data here. So I don't know that I was completely responsive to your question, but no, those counties don't trend similarly because their compensation practices, in my opinion, aren't similar.
Okay. Thank you.
I do want to call out the small chart that's included there, and this is the average monthly turnover. And I included that in this presentation because I wanted to point out the last quarter of the fiscal year. And so what you see there is that fairly dramatic increase, which comes as no surprise when we, we think about, from a practical standpoint, it's during the summer months. So people are more inclined to move and make a change when kids are out of school, when they're able to make a significant life change. And we see that reflected in our data. We also see turnover trends upward over the Christmas holiday season, similar reasons, it's between semesters. So while our dotted lines are delightfully trending down, we do expect that to increase based upon the last quarter. However, if we stay with what we've experienced in the last five years, at that increase being about a little over a percentage, we still should be in really good shape. Our total turnover as compared to our city and town comparators, you see here, we don't fare quite as well as we do when compared to the counties. This is no surprise to us who monitor, and it's no surprise to any of my department leaders that are sitting behind me, because candidly, it's our cities and towns that we are at significant risk of losing our employees to because of their ability to pay more than we are in the larger county structure. We looked at our average turnover county comparators, Maricopa and Pima only, and we chose to focus on these two because candidly, those are the counties we're most likely to lose people to and we're most likely to steal people from. What's important in this chart is we also added the salary increases that this Board has granted our employees over the last number of years. And I hope you're seeing what we're seeing here, is that with market-based increases being provided to our employees, particularly when you look at our voluntary turnover rate, and that's really the one we focus on when we look at compensation, because that's what we frame as regrettable turnover, we're going to lose people for retirement. That's a natural, inevitable, necessary part of business. And we're going to lose people because of involuntary separations. All of our hires aren't going to be the right fit. But those who leave voluntarily are the ones we want to pay attention to. And you can see there's a correlation between our compensation strategies and our turnover. We dropped significantly in that fiscal year 1718, and again, that's where the major compensation initiative, Evergreen, took place. And then we have stabilized in terms of voluntary turnover. In my previous experience working in compensation, we always wanted to look at that 10% level. And our goal was always to keep it below 10%. And you can see, we are, we're doing a fine job in making that happen. So we wanted to look at, of those leave, leaving, why are they leaving? And so we took a quick look at our exit interviews. And I need to be candid with you, our number of employees that complete exit interviews is candidly quite small, in the 15 to 20% range. So I want a full disclosure, let you know that this isn't robust data. However, I do believe it was important enough to include because it tells a story. And we have no reason to believe that it isn't an accurate story. And anecdotally, what we hear from our department leaders, that this is consistent with what their employees are telling them. The primary reasons employee leave are salary, other employment, lack of advancement. That changed in this last year, where we saw supervisor management work-related stress and burnout occur. And I'll speak to that a little bit more here in a moment. But for purposes of this slide, I wanted to also call to your attention the average tenure of those completing these exit interviews. Five years, 5.45 years, and then 6.68 years. We did, and I promise you, we did not go seeking this data. It was the team pulled together data from different sources, had different team members pulling it together. And when this came back, similar to the earlier graph where I pointed out, something's happening where we're losing people at that five to 10-year mark. The fact that this came back and provided some consistent messaging, I thought it important to share with you today. So the nickel and dime of it all, the cost of replacement. This data, this chart came from SHRM, the Society of Human Resource Management, and that's really our go-to organization for human resources. And this, as well as others, indicate that when we lose an employee, it costs about a third of their annual salary to replace them in terms of hard costs, recruiting, background checks, drug screens, temp workers, and even the time it takes for managers to interview, for staff to make arrangements, to do the analysis of salary. There's a lot of work that goes into replacing one employee. Then the soft costs, the loss of productivity, interview time, et cetera. So we take turnover very seriously when we look at human resources practices. The final slide I want you to call attention to in terms of our graphs is the vacancies. So we have, as indicated in that first slide, 142. This is a breakdown by EEO category. So this helps tell us where our vacancies sit. And as you can see from this, our largest number of vacancies are protective services group, followed by our administrative support, and then our professionals. These are in total numbers. I'll speak to rates here in a moment. So, any questions about the data? And I'd like to go share with you our impressions based upon this data, and then some of the assumptions. So, number one, our protective services, professionals, and admin support represent the highest number of vacancies. However, our service maintenance group is the highest percentage relative to the number of positions. Why is this? Because they're difficult to fill positions. We have a lack of qualified candidates. We have a lack of interested candidates in the type of positions we offer. We have job offers declined based upon the compensation we're able to offer and the location where the work is performed. I call out also the merit rules. May impede versus support hiring qualified candidates. In this economy, hiring people, being able to hire people quickly when they have options is important. And the merit rules add a layer of bureaucracy that may work against us, hiring the most qualified, then support the merit's intent is to do just that. The next impression, the average age of our first-year employees trends older. That's why I pointed out that specific slide to you, that our average age is 36. Our assumptions, younger workers and recent college graduates are simply not drawn to public service. This is not unique to Pinal County. This is an issue in government, public service, and federal service across the country. Our Pinal County turnover rate is favorable. This is the good news about this data. If we hire, they will stay. If we bring people here to Pinal County, there's a culture here that you have, we have every right to be proud of, and people do love working for Pinal County. Since 2017, the county has offered regular salary advancements. Our assumptions, based upon the data, is regular increases in market competitiveness helps to stabilize that voluntary turnover rate, and that is our goal. The number of employees with five to 10 years, 10 years less than the period before and the period after. Our assumption is once an employee becomes proficient in their role- Our assumption is once an employee becomes proficient in their role, we are at higher risk to lose them, particularly in like those professional-type positions. Generally speaking, those are positions that require a degree or equivalent. And so once an employee comes with us and's been here for five or so years, they've attained that necessary experience level, and they are highly sought after by our competitors. So that's a critical timeframe, we believe, for us to pay attention to here in Pinal County. So we don't lose that workforce at that tenure and helps to keep them. And all of this plays together in our overall goals. The average tenure of employees completing exit interviews is five point seven-one years. And to my earlier point, employees achieve greater marketability at approximately five years and can obtain better jobs and salaries with our competitors. The most consistently cited reasons for leaving, salary, other employment, lack of advancement. Our assumptions, if we could address lack of opportunities and competitive pay, we could stem regrettable turnover. In 2020, supervisor management and work-related stress and burnout rose to the top three reasons. We believe that's a reflection of COVID. COVID's had a negative impact on the wellbeing of our workforce. The stress and changing nature of how work was performed, along with a pause in our supervisor and leadership training and our culture initiatives have had an impact on the overall quality of supervision and management. Retirements increased significantly in 2020. That in part, we believe, is because of COVID. It helped push people towards decisions. But here's the critical piece to that. This increase in retirements, combined with the lack of younger workers entering public service, will strain this county's ability to achieve its mission if we don't pay attention. Some additional considerations that I wanted to be sure to share with you, and I know this doesn't come as any surprise, inflation and the impact that inflation is having. What is fascinating to us in looking at this data is we looked at this in December. And the data in December from the same source indicated that the increase was point five from a year ago. That's December 2020. So the consumer price increase, index increase in December 2020 was point five from the year prior. When we obtained this data here a few days ago, it is now up to four point nine percent higher than a year ago. So we are paying attention, and as you all know, and I know, in your, your business lives and your private lives, you're seeing the impact. Why this matters to us is the relative value of our wages. And also, I call to your attention, minimum wage. As you're aware, by state statute, minimum wage is, there's a direct connection to the Consumer Price Index. Each January, the minimum wage changes based upon the United States Consumer Price Index in August of the previous year. So if we continue to trend at this higher level, we can expect to see another change in our minimum wage. However, we're not concerned about that, and here's why. We looked at where our current employees' wages sit, and we are in really good shape in terms of, like, we believe we only have maybe two employees in our entire workforce that are below approximately twelve dollars and fifty or sixty cents. And that would be if, if I use the four point nine percent as the increase, that's where our minimum wage would fall. And here's why I believe we're in such good shape, is because the county has been keeping pace with market increases and your across-the-board increases, and therefore, we're not lacking. We're staying par with what's going on. So I shared that because I, from a budget perspective, we don't anticipate we're going to have to do any budget fix come January with respect to our state minimum wage. However, I do want to make you aware that recently, the city of Tucson increased their minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. And they followed behind, as you all know, Flagstaff did a number of years ago. So we're keeping an eye on that as we hear that counties may be viewing this as well as others. So not that we have any concrete data for you at this point, but just to make you aware, we are keeping an eye on that because to the extent those are the organizations we're in competition with, we want to make sure that we aren't caught off guard. Private sector competitors, just to make you aware, that the largest component of compensation costs they, over the last twelve months, have increased about three point four percent. Again, all of this data comes to us from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So where do we go from here? Given all of this, I want to share with you some thoughts. But again, as I initiated this conversation with you, what's most important to us is to hear your reactions. Where would you like us to go? What flexibility or opportunity for change do you want us to consider? We believe that we must engage in more proactive, targeted recruitment efforts to fill difficult positions. Candidly, we have been, well, I want to call attention to James and his team for his work in communications and advertising and branding. But frankly, we've been largely reactive, waiting for people to come to us. We need to get out there and get ahead of it, and especially focus on those areas where we're having vacancies. We must introduce strategies to engage a younger and earlier career demographic in our public service, in our candidates. We want to make certain we are getting out to our colleges, our high schools, look at internships, apprenticeships. Again, if we get them here, they stay. The challenge is getting people to realize Pinal County government is the place to be. That's not going to happen unless we do a better job of meeting face-to-face and getting our workforce out there to make the connections. In recruitment, wanna, with your permission, wanna take a look at the merit rules. As you all know, merit rules and civil service was created back in the eighteen hundreds for very good reasons, and they still exist for very good reasons. However, the goal of merit systems was to make sure we hired the most qualified workforce. To the extent some of the rules have been replaced by laws, to the extent some of the rules don't get us there, I think we have an opportunity to look at them and make changes where appropriate so we're achieving the intended purpose, bringing in the most qualified candidates we can to fill our jobs and, most importantly, serve our residents.
Mary Ellen?
Yes.
Can I ask a question and kind of to that last slide and what, and this is just more of an observation that I've observed over the years. It tends to track with the economy. As there's downturns in construction, in the private sector, we see migration of good employees that, that come to the public sector for the consistent pay and service. As soon as things turn the other way and the, the private sector takes off, there's a migration out back to the private sector where there's more money. And I just don't know if, have, have you looked at any of that as well? And these times are probably difficult to look at because this is not a normal economic situation, for lack of a better word, right at this point in time. So does that, have you, have you observed that? Or do you think I'm full of whatever, you know, that I'm not, that?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sip it. I so wanted to respond, and then I remembered where I was. Chairman Miller, members of the board, I'll stay on, on task here. That is actually, mirrors my experience exactly.
Well, thank you.
That when the external market is good, that we have a difficult time recruiting. When there's a downturn or a, the market isn't so good, people are drawn to public service for its stability. And in fact, I was looking at some of the data here over the last few weeks, and we are seeing as a result of COVID, candidly, that there is greater employment happening in public sector because public sector managed to navigate through COVID better than some of our private sector industries did. And then when you think about it, not so much at the professional level, but our skilled labor and our, that workforce, that's the jobs in private sector that pay well, particularly like construction and those kinds of jobs. We're in competition with that younger demographic to attract as well. So in my experience, yes, sir, I think you're spot on with that. But in the recent years, we haven't had that as a pressure, so don't know what's going to happen in the, in the next.
We're, we're navigating through some different types of waters at this point in time, so, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. So the, this slide speaks to compensation. And where do we go from here? Continue what works. The across-the-board increases consistent with market, controlled discretion. And that this board has allowed us in the last few years to carve out some compensation budget in order to address areas where inequities exist still in our workforce, where we're having difficulty retaining, and where some compression still exists. And that ties into the next bullet, consider pay for performance and merit pay. This has been an issue raised in speaking with our elected officials and our department directors, understanding very clearly there's a challenge with this because want to make sure it doesn't reflect favoritism or any of the negative, but not to be afraid or resident or just not moving forward with addressing some kind of pay for performance at all. We want to stem the tide with respect to our high performers leaving to our competitors. If, we'd love to have the flexibility to be able to be responsive, to be able to be agile with controlled discretion, and controlled discretion isn't my words. This comes from one of our distinguished elected officials that hold us accountable but allow us the flexibility to respond when we're at risk of losing someone that will have a negative impact on our business and operations. Reconsider comparators. Candidly, Chairman Miller, members of the board, our current comparators, looking to the six largest counties and the six largest incorporated areas, we are not losing people to those other counties. And to do a one-size-fits-all is handicapping us with respect to being competitive, especially among some of our professional-level positions. So we'd love to be able to explore, looking at our competitors, who are we losing people to and who are we stealing people from? And evaluate their compensation strategy so when we make decisions, we are doing it mindful of those groups. And then recognizing that it's, again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Different strategies for different professions and workforce makes some sense so we're not overvaluing or undervaluing the talent that we're trying to bring. Minimum wages, I've already indicated, that's on our watch list. And then finally, evaluate options, eligibility for the American Rescue Plan Act. There's been some discussion with other organizations about one-time or monies going towards essential workers. We are paying attention to this. The criteria is, as it comes up, we're making sure what we do is consistent and appropriate. COVID-related work considerations, just want to bring this to your attention. The first one is the evaluation strategy. Last year, the board at that time authorized us to make an exception to the completion of annual appraisals for all county employees. They are required by policy in order to be considered for and across the board or any other kind of salary increase. Last year, we asked for an exception to that, reason being is COVID shook our workforce world up. We had people teleworking. We had individuals whose work changed because the nature of the business changed. Want to ask that you consider a waiving of that requirement again, possibly for this year. And here's the reasoning behind it. Back last June or July is when we should have sat down with our employees and established goals and objectives by which evaluations would be based. We are in the midst of COVID surge during that timeframe. We also still had employees teleworking. So the extent to which there was ongoing communication and observation and quality, goal-based discussion is questionable. So candidly, what we don't want to do is go through the exercise of doing evaluations for the sake of evaluations versus performance evaluations that are based upon observation, good established criteria. What we did last year with the permission of the board was waived evaluations except for those who were underperforming and those who were on probation. Evaluations were required for that group to be considered for a across-the-board increase if it's the desire of this board to do such again this year. So we'd ask you to entertain such a change again this year with the, well, I'll get into that in a moment. I also indicated up there, return to work. I think it would be really inappropriate of us, given the COVID experience, given what I've described earlier about our ability to attract and retain a qualified workforce, to not use this opportunity to think about the way we do business. Do we need to go back to the pre-COVID days where everyone is in government space? Are there options to look at different locations and different strategies to perform the work? I'm not standing before you to say there are. I'm not standing before you to say there are. I think it's just important that we go through that exercise as we think about our future and our ability to attract people to our location. We should ask ourselves, is that necessary in the first place? I'd like to now move on to performance management and career development. Again, continue what works. I hope if nothing else, this data shows there's so much good about this county. The Core Culture Initiative, employment engagement strategies. I will call to your attention again, as part of the Core Culture Initiative and the efforts to provide community service. That's an absolute attraction to younger workforces, the ability to make a difference. And this county was ahead of the curve in introducing that. It got shut down by COVID. But we just need to re-energize the great ideas and do more of what works. Encourage us to evaluate the performance management process. There are different ways of evaluating the work, really focused on ongoing communication rather than annual events. And that's what our workforce cares about. You've heard it, you've heard Leo present this before. Employees are driven by recognition and communication. That starts with first-line supervisors. Like to call your attention to the tuition reimbursement program and the possibility of loan repayment. Our tuition reimbursement strategy currently requires that our employees spend $2,000 and then they're eligible for a 75% reimbursement. The way the policy reads, it speaks to, it seems to imply that you have to go to a four-year university. We want to turn that upside down, make it possible for our entry-level workers, our lower-wage workers, our younger workers to have opportunities for careers here by investing in their growth. And candidly, that's what the younger generation is asking of us, invest in their growth. And they will give us a return on that investment. And again, I call out the merit rules and revisions and updates because the merit rules are woven throughout all that we do. And then finally, leadership development and succession planning. All of this work, human resources, we can handle it from the central office. But at the end of the day, we all know where the rubber meets the road is with our first-line supervisors and managers. So we encourage a continued commitment to supervisor training, management leadership training, succession planning, knowledge transfer, developing career paths. And I tie again the merit rules revisions because given the nature, to the extent it either implies or requires a process that doesn't allow us to identify who our most qualified up-and-comers are, we may risk on keeping our most qualified. So Chairman Miller, members of the board, we believe these strategies are best suited to our needs approached not as a one-size-fits-all and with a focus on combining the various approaches from recruitment to retention and with lots of recognition along the way. What matters is what is your vision? How do we take these various human resources aspects and come back to you with something that will help you achieve your vision? And critically important, help support the elected officials and the department directors behind me that need to have people there to do the work. And forgive my soapbox, but delivering to our community requires people who are committed to do it in an exceptional way. And we just want to create the foundation and have a framework and an infrastructure that allows us to do that. So with that, any questions, thoughts, or comments?
Well, you've gotten my attention on two things, really. I think the merit rules, we should revisit those and really maybe do some more work on that. The reimbursement for education, I've never read the policy. So I guess your explanation of it is, we need to encourage education continuously. I mean, I don't care what profession you're in or what you're doing. Things change all the time and you want to stay abreast. And so, yeah, I would certainly want to see some flexibility there where with this, just like electric cars and all these different things, that's all going to be part of our operations at some point in some day. So we need to stay abreast of access, to allow our employees to have access to continued education some way, some how. So that, those are the two things that really have caught my attention to help try and do some retention of our employees. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts? Supervisor Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You put a lot of thought into all of this and all the suggestions and everything that you're suggesting here, I wholeheartedly agree with. I think this whole efforts of what we're trying to do. I mean, Supervisor Kavanaugh gave a good speech over here about it really comes down to the people and the relationships and things that we have in life and how we value the life. And so the things that you're suggesting and giving some direction to, and that's what you're looking for, I think, is more of guidance. I think you're on the right course, at least from my opinion. And I like all the suggestions and everything that you're putting there. And so you and I have had several conversations about some of the things that we need to do. I do like the tuition and reimbursement aspect of it. And when you're talking about, I'm hoping and I'm assuming, I'm sure of, that our workforce, Joel Millman and all those individuals are really heavily engaged and working with you to help fill the vacancies and even the future. I met with several developers these last couple of weeks and large landowners out here. And the tsunami that's coming our way in developments is just, from what their projections and what their perception is, is going to be crazy. I mean, we haven't seen nothing yet.
And Chairman Miller and Supervisor Goodman, members of the board, that we're an employer. And as we attract other employers, we create competition for our own workforce. We need to be in the game. So thank you for your support.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Mary Ellen, are people leaving to take positions that pay so significantly more that we could not compete?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor Kavanaugh, no. That's the, and again, I'm going to look to my directors behind me. I think that is probably the biggest frustration is if we had greater flexibility, if I may be very candid with this board, right now, we have to come back to you for everything. That takes too much time. If we could have limited flexibility in order to do a counter offer, we're talking a few thousand dollars. Employees are saying to us, we don't want to leave. But I can't afford not to go when we're talking $5,000, $7,000. So they have to face their families. But if we would counter with something, there's no doubt they would stay. So it isn't significant dollars that would make it out of the reasonable realm of possibility to counter or keep. And again, we're talking critical retention here. We're really talking keeping those who we, the directors, we believe are essential to our business and our future.
May I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely.
And early on, you talked about the reasons people leave, aside from money. And how do we measure, before we get to the point where we do an exit interview, how are we measuring employee satisfaction, those elements that might lead to a departure? How are we measuring those along the way? Are we doing that yet?
Chairman Miller, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes, we are. We have, and I'm going to look to Leo to jump in if I misstate anything. But at least the last three years in a row, we have done surveys of our workforce and asked them, basically, I'm paraphrasing, but what are we doing right? What do you want more of? And the feedback that we get from those have helped us to focus on areas for improvement. Some of the big ones have been around communication and employee recognition. That's why I spoke to those earlier. But the most recent one was done within the last year and happy to share that data with you.
Okay. And thank you for your presentation. It was fantastic. And I'm constantly impressed with your work product. So I appreciate that. And Mr. Chairman, I would support, you know, I think when we talk about increases in wages, I think it's important that we recognize people for the job they do. Recognize that we're in inflationary period. The federal government's printing money. But I think we first, if we're going to go down this path, the first thing we ought to do is look at pay for sheriff deputies, the base pay. And we want to be competitive there. And I would encourage our board to look at that as a priority.
Yeah. And I think the other thing you kind of hit on is our comparators. And that's a moving target constantly, I really believe. Because I think every four or five years, it does, it shifts. And we really need to pay attention to really, who are we competing against or for those positions? Because it doesn't make sense to pick a county that just because similar to us, it is like us at all. That's not really who we're competing against. So that's another good key point, which would lead to those analysis of what's that job really pays.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to work on that.
Mr. Chair, I agree with that. We need to look at our local competitors, not way out there, some statistical numbers, like who is it really? Who's down the street? And to be able to have, I'm seeing a lot of heads nod at here to see, excuse me, to see the heads, to be able to have the managers be able to increase the salary. If they're in their budget, I have no problem with that. You have a budget set here, then use it, some of their discretion, to raise those salaries so that you can keep people. Because like in so many cases where you go along and say, boy, you'd be the best person for it. And they go, yeah, oh, it's nice, but you know, yesterday, somebody gave me a better job offer. You know, that is crazy. We need to be able to be rather fleet of foot and say, we need you here. We need your historical knowledge. And here's, you know, pick a number and pay them.
Any other questions?
I'd just echo Supervisor Kavanaugh's statement about law enforcement. That's a whole separate industry than the rest of government with what's happening to them around the nation. So we do definitely try to, need to retain who we have and recruit well. Otherwise, before you know it, in a few years, we could really be behind the eight ball. So we need to maintain what we have and increase on that.
Thank you.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Part of what attracts people to Pinnell County, we have an orderly society. We have a safe society. And if we fail, if we fall and into the trap of not appreciating our police officers, our deputies, and we have to rebuild from, rebuild a police force when, at a time when young people don't want to go into policing, I think we would be remiss in failing to identify this problem.
Well, yep, I think, is there any direction out of this?
I think I have good, clear direction. Thank you so much. And it would be remiss of me if I didn't leave you all with the true recognition that's deserved here today. And that's of the HR team that helped put this presentation together. I had them just jumping through hoops galore to collect data, to go to our comparators, to pull together graphs. And so Leo Rodriguez, I introduced her earlier, Alexa Rodriguez, Anisa Air. And then of course, Randy Tracy. I want to acknowledge them, got a great group to work with. And thank you all for your time and attention here today.
Well, thank you. A great presentation and thank to all of you that worked on it. So. Brings us to item number three.
Good afternoon.
Woods, how are you?
Good. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Angie Woods. I am the Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Today, I have with me quite a few department heads and elected officials to be prepared for any questions that you might have in regards to the general fund budget development process and the forecasts that I am going to present to you today. Thank you to all that are joining me. Sorry, missed the clicker. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of the expenditures, I wanted to take a little bit and recap and talk about our revenue sources and assumptions for the forecast and the general fund. In March, I came before you and presented a forecast. Since that time, we have been, my team and I have spent quite a bit of time with our department heads and their financial team looking at the revenues that we collect in our county. And I wanted to give you a kind of update there. Property tax-wise, we've currently collected about 98% of the property tax bills have been collected at this point in time. So we're pretty confident that what we budgeted will receive there. Our local county sales tax, when I presented in the beginning of March, our trend, you know, our trend was probably around 18%, 19%. Our current trend of collection in that local sales tax is currently 25% over the previous year. I think there's a lot of that is due to some of the stimulus payments that the federal government has given to our constituents. I have no grounds on that other than what I'm seeing in the types, you know, retail restaurants contracting, those types of revenue, sales tax. We're seeing the increases specifically, the most recent in the March timeframe, we, you know, that was about the time that we received this last stimulus payment. We saw a direct increase at that point in time in retail. Retail was 36% over the previous year for the month of March. Restaurants and bars went up 44% in comparison to the same timeframe in the previous year. And I, you know, from that, that is where we just received a stimulus. I expect for that to go back down in the future because obviously, it's one-time money and people are out spending that. You know, in the forecast, I am trying to be conservative when it relates to sales tax because there again, we're seeing some one-time type things happen. We're wanting to be prudent in the fact that we don't know how the pandemic is going to affect our ongoing. Forecast-wise, taking in all of the sales tax that we have received so far this year and being moderate in the next, we only have three collections of sales tax for this fiscal year. My forecast is about 18%. In the areas of state shared sales tax, which is that, in that piece of the pie, the 30% piece of the pie, 20% of that is our state shared sales tax. Currently, we're trending at 16.8% over the previous. Currently, we're trending at 16.8% over the previous year. My forecast is still conservative, knowing that we still have three months' collections left. We're forecasting a 13% increase over the previous year. And budgetarily, I wanted to point out that when we put together the fiscal year 2021 budget, we were very, at that time, the pandemic had just started. We didn't know what impacts that was going to make on our revenue streams. So we budgeted very, very conservatively. And as far as excise tax goes, the county, county sales tax, we've collected at this point in time, 99% of what we budgeted. The VLT license tax, we've collected 102% of what we budgeted. Our state shared sales tax, we've already collected 89% of what we budgeted. And that's why in the later charts, you'll see how much that increases over this year and why we think it's one-time only.
Angie?
Yes, sir.
So COVID stopped the leakage.
That would be.
I mean, for the leakage is the people that leave our area go buy goods in another county. And they had to stay home, so they bought in our county.
That would be my assumption. I have no basis, we have not done any studies to, you know, poll any of our constituents to see what their habits have changed. But my assumption is, yes, people are staying within the county to purchase their, you know, their goods.
They should trend, and the online as well. I mean, because now with the ability to tax and we get those shares, we get something out of the internet sales as well.
Yeah, and to be quite honest with you, in comparison, you know, if we're comparing the month of, because our most recent collection is for the month of March. If we compare the online retail sales for the month of March this year to the month of March last year, we have collected 111% more this year than we did last year.
Wow.
In that particular month. So I think year, fiscal year to date for online sales tax, we have collected roughly $1.5 million that we hadn't been collecting in the past.
So will those trends trend back? Or will they just come back partway? It's hard to tell.
It is hard to tell. And in future years of our forecast, we've been very prudent in the fact of what is unknown. So increases over this year are very minimal because we don't know what's going to happen. But even so, we do know what's happening with the primary property tax. And part of the discussion today that I'd like direction from you all is where we want to go with that primary property tax rate. Because that is, at this point, what we do know going into the future somewhat.
Which is almost the opposite. We used to be, we didn't know where the property tax was going to go, but we always were pretty consistent on our sales tax.
Yeah, we're in a very unique situation at this point in time.
It's reversed.
Kind of flip-flopped. I don't know, I guess the other thing, I don't have percentages on the rest of the chart here. That 12% is made up of charges for service. So charges that our departments are giving to our constituents. Fines and forfeits, development-type fees, you know, permitting-type revenues, other miscellaneous revenues that just trickle in into our departments. So that 12% is such a small piece of the pie, I didn't want to call out each of those separately.
That's fine for now.
Do we have any other questions on this? So overall, our general fund forecast for the revenue side of things is doing really, really great. So in looking at our expenditures, and this is where I've invited those behind me to join me today to help answer some questions in regards to how the budget was developed or is currently being developed. But first, you know, you just heard from Mary Ellen. We've, in our, in this current year's budget, we have taken her considerations for employee compensation increases into account when we develop this budget. We've also taken into account any retirement increases, workers' compensation increases. With the department's submissions, the personnel piece for our general fund is increasing significantly this year. And I don't think that that is, this is what I know. So I took a look at data comparing this, say, the population for our county. In the last four years, the population, our constituents, has grown about 13%. Our workforce in the county has grown about 13%. That means that we've, in the last four years, 22,000 jobs have come to Penile County. So that's in, you know, due to the efforts of our economic development. You know, we're already seeing those benefits. The employment of those, the workforce that has increased, the work, the employment has actually increased 12% in comparison to four years ago. And I do know, you know, the population piece, the population significant to the unincorporated population of Penile County, that has increased 11%. So we're growing unincorporated just as quickly as, you know, the entire county. So with that being said, the services that are being demanded of our departments is significantly increasing. So when I looked at the number of FTEs that we had four years ago versus what is being requested this year, and it's kind of funny, the number of FTEs that are, the percentage increase there is only 10% from four years ago. So even though our population and the demand for our services is growing significantly, you know, about 13%, we've only grown our workforce by about 10% with this budget. The personnel that, you know, the significant, on the screen, the departments that are up here, significant number of those that positions that are requested are on this screen. I would say more than half of them are listed here. Sheriff's Office is asking for 12 sworn law enforcement staff. And then the other five and a half are for administrative or other purposes within their department. The Assessor's Office is asking for nine and a half positions. Four of those are due to new locations. The County Attorney's Office, five and a half positions. Some of those are because some of their special revenues are being, you know, grants are going away, so they still want to continue that service for our constituents. So they'd like to move those positions over to the general fund. Our Recorder's Office, they're wanting to staff the new locations. Community development, we're talking about construction. Construction is booming right now. As I talk to Lester and his team, I get the sense that they're on a hamster wheel. They're trying to pump out all of this work very, but there's not enough people to get enough of the work done. So they're asking for people to be more efficient in their efforts. Facilities, you know, with new locations, there's more to clean, there's more to maintain. Finance the same thing. As our departments are growing, finance, human resources, my office, we're all needing to support the departments that we are serving. So any questions with the additional personnel?
Let's see, Jay.
Okay. The increases in operational expenses, they're pretty specific. Fleet is asking for additional money to maintain and replace the maintenance of our sheriff's fleet vehicles and replacement of the sheriff's fleet vehicles. I did provide you before this meeting detailed information regarding all of the department requests. Those department requests, you know, written by department heads, their financial staff to give you reasoning behind what their needs are. Fleets especially, you know, the replacement of the sheriff's vehicles because of budget cuts in the past, they were not replacing the number of vehicles as the vehicle was needing to be replaced, you know, going out of service because of the number of miles. They were unable to replace them on that schedule because we weren't giving enough budget capacity. So some of the increased operational expenses in fleet are to put those vehicles back on a regular maintain, maintenance and replacement schedule. IT increases there are, you know, service levels. Hardware and maintenance needs to be repaired, replaced. Software maintenance of some of our major systems that we have in the county. You know, we're a little bit at the mercy of those software companies. Some of them, I know when I was talking to Steve Fraser, some of those maintenance agreements are increasing by 30%.
Angie, on the IT part of it, I don't see Steve here. But I mean, I remember the presentation by him or a conversation by him that the security cyber attack is just constant and could require even more. I mean, is that included in his request? Does he have, is that a line item?
It is, sir.
Okay, okay, good.
I think he's taken an overall look, and he may be in the overflow room.
If it's in, if it's in there, I'm good, that's all I.
Want to come forward and answer the question?
On your increase for the IT department, conversations I've had with you, the cybersecurity is a huge threat constantly. Do we have, have you put enough in there to protect us? In that, at least in your opinion?
Right, and Chairman Miller and members of the board, we've had this conversation before. You could give me, you know, $2 million more dollars and probably not move the needle on cybersecurity significantly. But yes, every year, we try to make marked improvements towards that. Implemented a few products in the past couple of years. Product services, education, number one. And you see Jerry and his team certainly out there doing a lot of that. That's number one. The biggest threat, biggest threat there is everyone sitting in front of a computer, so. But yeah, part of it is that. Primarily, the maintenance increases Angie speaks of are just kind of normal escalations that a lot of these software's do. And it ranges from 3% a year. We've had a few, Microsoft last year was 30%. Yeah, brutal.
All right, well, I just, I know that that seems to be a common thread, not just here in Penile County, but in other locations and other industries and businesses.
But you're right, a piece of that, Chairman Miller, is covering cyber. I mean, cybersecurity sprinkled throughout the operation in IT. So infrastructure, as well as cybersecurity team, application, the whole nine yards. So it's sprinkled throughout.
Thank you.
Some of the increases, thank you, Steve, for your information. Some of the increases that we're seeing, you know, Public Works, you've been, you've had a work session about a community cleanup and the desert dumping program. That's included in this budget. Our Sheriff's Office, they're asking for additional funds for aviation repair and maintenance. They're needing some specialized law enforcement equipment that has not been on a regular replacement schedule. So some of those increases are there as well. And I didn't go into great detail. This is the very high level. I did give you quite detailed information from our departments. At this time, do you want any of those? Do you have any questions for them? Anything specific that I can have them come and answer for you?
I don't have anything, anyway.
You have a question, or you're good?
Well, I guess, just one comment. You know, and Steve, I know he just stepped out, but one thing is, is that we've talked a lot about the technology and increasing the capability of online services. I think that'd help us out tremendously, so I just, and I haven't looked through it completely yet. You know, that's a lot of departments we've got to go through. So I will have questions when it comes to some of that stuff. And so I just want to look at that, okay? But thank you.
Certainly. There's no other questions? We'll take a look at, you know, so in the budget, we've built in one-time, you know, those one-time revenues that I was talking about. We have some strategic priorities that focus on technology and facilities. So we'd like to move the needle a little bit in these areas. Technology-wise, you know, I don't want to necessarily go through this list, but there's a list here of whether it's computer system replacement or, you know, a disconnected backup for our IT department or the Sheriff's Office piloting a program for body worn and vehicle camera systems. We're wanting to use the one-time revenues that we've, you know, we do really consider one-time to make some improvements in these technology and facilities. You know, facilities, we're wanting to do some improvements for our medical examiner's building. Very important there. Our adult detention center, some of the plumbing needs to be replaced in our detention center. This, the building A and D, in the past, you've heard our facilities director talk about both building in A and D, renovations of those buildings, those types of things. That's what we're wanting to do with these one-time revenues. In addition to what's there, I did give you a larger list of items. And I did not include on there our medical benefit trust. We're wanting to set aside some of our one-time revenues to put toward our medical benefit trust. And these are all things that have been mentioned or talked about or had strategic, I'm sorry, work sessions in the past. So it's not surprising for you, but I wanted to bring them to light because they are built into this year's budget. Any questions with those?
Go ahead.
Ms. Woods, do you know if that Eagle 3D flyover formerly pictometry, is that in cooperation with the Assessor's Office?
Yes, sir, it is. So several years ago, a pictometry came, and they did a flyover of part of our county. This would be an additional flyover. So they'd take a second flyover of the space that was done in the past. But they're also expanding the area because it was very specific at that point in time. And since then, the area that they would like to fly over is greater so that more of our departments can use it. Like, we're wanting, some of the uses could be used by, say, our flood control. Or our public works groups could use that data imagery to help in their planning process. So in addition to the Assessor's request, we're trying to do this flyover to meet other needs that are in the county as well.
It sounds like it's more beneficial to the other departments than the Sheriff's Office. Is that, would that be accurate, Chief? No.
That is not accurate because the Sheriff's Office was consulted in the area that, for the second flyover, they were consulted, and the area that they would like to see is also in that flyover. Can I answer your question?
Does that make sense?
Well, I'll ask the chief later.
Okay.
Okay. So any other questions?
Seeing none.
This brings us to our general fund forecast. And please, I want to keep in mind that since you've seen the forecast three months ago in the beginning of March, there have been property, I'm sorry, not property, sales tax payments have come in. And at the time, I forecasted very conservatively. So the major changes that you're seeing in the column for fiscal year 21, or sorry, 2021, 2021, major changes there is about $5 million. And that is in the areas of county sales tax and intergovernmental. Intergovernmental has increased significantly due to those sales tax increases that we were talking about earlier. And it's, some of it is in the nature of how we conservatively forecast. So with that means that the revenue less ongoing expenditures also increased about that same amount. So the $6.3 million plus the $14 million, we're really asking to take those one-time revenues and put into our facilities and IT infrastructure. Okay? In the chart for fiscal year 21, 22, all of the green areas there, I've already added in the requests from the department so that you can see at the tax rate of $3.75, we end by allowing our departments their requests, plus doing all of the IT and infrastructure, facilities, infrastructure improvements. We're still estimating our reserve to be 21%. Okay? Questions there?
Seeing none. Move on.
You had asked at the beginning of March to provide you a couple of scenarios to lower the tax rate. So I chose to show this scenario, which is taking the tax rate halfway in between where it is and our truth in taxation rate. And that is $3.71. The only areas on this chart that changed are the ones that I've highlighted. So the property tax decreases about $1 million, and that same $1 million is taken out of our reserve. So instead of being at 21%, I would be forecasting us to be at 20%. Questions there? Okay. And then I'm providing you the scenario that is at the truth in taxation rates. So this is basically a flat levy. Levy would stay essentially the same as what it is this year. The only difference is our levy increases to bring in the new construction. So we begin to tax the 3.6755 for the new construction that has come onto the roll. So the difference between this scenario and the 3.75 scenario is about a $2 million difference. And there again, it's being taken out of our ending fund balance, which we would now be at 42 million, and it's still at 20%. Any questions there? So at this time, I'd like to get some direction from the board in regards to where, you know, whether or not we would like to allow our department increases to occur. We're at the point in the budget development that I need to know from you how to put together a tentative budget, and that tentative budget is really reliant on the requests from our departments and the tax rate. So.
Any comments, thoughts?
You've got one.
I do. I see that.
I do have a comment or a thought, Chairman. It comes from Supervisor McClure. We had talked about the possibility, I think, just, we chatted about the tax rate and the potential of lowering the tax rate a little bit, but now I'm concerned with the government printing money till they run out of paper. You know, what happens if we were to lower the tax rate slightly, then with the hyperinflation that we're likely to experience? Have you examined those possibilities?
So some of the, so the way we put together our forecast, we are pretty conservative when it comes to the revenues. And then on the expenditure side, we're taking into consideration some of the inflationary changes. So what you're seeing here, I've already built in some of what you're talking about. In addition to that, the suggestion, you know, and this comes from, mostly from our county manager, Leo, Lou, that, you know, the more we have in reserve, the more agile we are to be able to react to the changing economy. So if our policy is currently a 15% reserve and we're making decisions to have a financial reserve that is, you know, in the 20 to, say, even 25% range, we have less, there's less risk of the changing environment. We have more time to make decisions regarding the economy. Does that make sense?
Angie, I'm trying to think about the past when we were struggling with 12% fund balance and 15 and scrambling to just keep it in those areas. This is a real comfort zone to me, I mean, in some ways, so.
Supervisor Miller, I've been in the budget office that entire time and been through the time where we had to make a strategic priority to set it at 15%. And I believe, working through that and working with department heads, elected officials, and coming together with a strategic plan, we were able to bring us to the place that we are today, and I don't want to go back.
All right. No, no.
But part of the strategic plan discussion that is going to happen in the next, I believe, month or two, right? I'd like to still continue to focus on the financial health of our county and make those decisions at that point. I don't want to go back to where we're having to ask departments to make cuts.
Oh, yeah. Those were brutal days.
Brutal days.
Yes, that was difficult. And this is our tax rate as it sets today, right?
The 2.75.
2.75.
Yeah, this.
And this is our.
This scenario here is where we set today and what would occur, what we likely think will occur if we leave the rate at 2.75 and approve all of the department requests and approve any IT and facility infrastructure improvements.
The 3.71 is that number that we've been kind of using, a four cents?
It is four cents, yes.
Yeah. But it's the right direction, and I, you know, four cents doesn't sound a lot, like a lot, until you have a company that's going to put almost a billion dollars in a site to develop, you know, for economic development. It actually turns out to be real money at some point, and those companies look at that number, so.
Well, and if.
I've been very proud of the fact that we've been able to drop it, because we were right around four when we started here about nine years ago.
That's exactly what I was just going to say. I think about the strategic moves that we've made over the few years. We were right about $4, and now it being at 3.75 and having a healthy fund balance, I think our strategic plan has served us well.
And the reason we've been able to do that is because we have had long and steady growth, and that growth has absorbed, we've been able to absorb those costs because of that growth. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, looking at all these numbers, I, you know, the four cents over the last, what, four years? Sorry. That's been a great direction, and I'm looking at the truth in taxation rate at eight cents lower, and we still are at a 20% reserve. And I, I wouldn't suggest that we drop eight cents, but even if we drop six cents, I mean, that's even better than our four, and we still come up with a good pile of money. We're still sitting at 20-plus percent reserve. And it's closer to not raising people's taxes on their primaries that they would be happy about. I mean, yes, your values have gone up, your tax rate has gone down a little bit to make it almost even.
Yeah.
And we're still doing well, and we can still approve the department's increases.
Right.
And we do have a growing population. I mean, I'm looking at my area, I've got stuff going like crazy. You've got a lot of things going on in your area. You have things going on in your area. I mean, we're just growing. And if we can keep the money generators like the appraisers and the assessor's office, you know, they go out, go out and touch those buildings and get them on the tax bill, then we continue to generate revenue and probably higher than this anticipated.
Yeah.
That's my thought.
So I'm hearing four or six cents?
Who's the best tea reader, tea leaf reader around?
I like six. I mean, you know, I'm.
I like that number. I have a problem.
That's where I'm at.
Six cents?
Yeah, I think that was a great suggestion, because I think we can afford to be a little bit more aggressive than we have been in the past, and the numbers are showing that right now, and we're even increasing the level of our comfortability with the 20% reserve. So, and we're delivering everywhere we need to do. We need to increase in a lot of areas. So, yeah.
And this is something that we'll revisit on an annual basis, and, you know, and we can talk about it in the strategic plan on where you all want to go, and revisit there again. So it's not the last time in this that we'll ever speak about this.
Although we wish it was.
I think we have a good ride for eight to 10 months, and that'll get us a pretty good chunk of it, and we can adjust if we need to, but, yeah, so.
Okay. So my direction.
The comments or questions? Everybody good?
My direction is we will move forward with all the department requests as is, and I will build a budget with a six cent reduction in the tax rate.
Six cent reduction.
Thank you very much for your time, supervisors. I appreciate you.
Keep this baby rolling.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Everybody good? She brought the troops. Okay. Getting adjourned, let's go home.